Hi, I'm Dan Poole with the Pickens Progress and we've got Larry Patterson who's going to be our moderator tonight. Before he gets up here, I would like to say that we're going to have a couple of questions just to warm up from Larry, then we're going to have questions from the floor. I'd like to ask everybody out there to ask a question that would generally apply to all the candidates, not just to a specific person. All the candidates will get a chance to respond to all the questions. Larry is our Progress's program correspondent and he has moderated quite a few political debates in time he did the Cherokee Sheriff's Race last year and he's already been asked to do a gubernatorial race in Cherokee County for next year. So we've got experience. So we've got, I want to thank Commissioner Rob Jones in the back for letting you assist space. We've got Sheriff Donnie Craig and Chief Greg Wobble here just in case we need any... I don't think we will. But anyway, when we get to the questions from the floor, just raise your hand and we'll just get you one at a time. The candidates will be given three minutes for the first couple of questions, which are the introductions, then after that they'll be given two minutes and a chance for anybody. Larry?
Thank you, Dan. Thank y'all for coming, welcome. It really washes my heart to see so many civic-minded people in Jasper and we do appreciate you coming tonight. Before we start, I would like for you to stand. We will do a place of allegiance. I'll lead you to that. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, consider it holy for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One more thing before we start. I always like to do this whenever I'm moderating one of these events. Are there any veterans in the office? If you are, raise your hand. Thank you for your service. Thank you. First off, we're going to have two preliminary questions. I know Jasper's a small community. We're a tight knit community and you know, the saying is everybody knows everybody else, but you might not know everybody. So we're going to give everybody an opportunity to introduce themselves and talk about their background, their experience and that sort of thing. I'm going to start off going alphabetically. Once we get into the debate, I'm going to alternate so everybody won't have the first question, the last question, you know, so it can be more fair that way. But anyway, let's start off with Mr. O'Day. Okay? Three minutes for this.
So thank you everyone for coming. This is definitely a huge turnout on there and I really appreciate Pickens Progress for allowing us to have this on there. A little bit of background about me, I mean, I'm not a politician. Sometimes I'm not quite PC as some people want on there, but I do love Jasper. I have, I've lived here for 15 years and I've been around a lot as a child, around a lot of different communities, a lot of different areas. As I was in the military, station to station on there. So I've seen a lot of different communities and this one is tight knit. It's a good community on there. It has a lot of potential for growth on there. I feel passionate about this, about the city. I feel that the city could improve to be the city that we all want it to be. We feel that. I feel that this community has room to grow, has rooms for things that everyone wants. As far as me, I know I'm part of a committee, a bigger committee and we all have to work together and I promise you I will work with the council members to make the city what we want it to be, what you want it to be, not what I want it to be, what you want it to be. Bring in things that you want, bring in more entertainment, bring in things that we can do as a family, as a family. I believe in bringing in these jobs and these things so that we don't have to drive all the way down to Atlanta. I was a safety consultant for the last three years on there. I drove down the land almost every day for a job because I needed support for my family and the only opportunities were heading south. Why? Why can't we have that here? Why can't we have those opportunities that the South has? But we can also do that in a way that we can make it still feel that home, that small hometown feeling. We can do that. We can have that nice, nice decoration in there while keeping it what we need while keeping it small. I may not have the experience that some of the other council members have on the city, running the city for the last couple of years that they have been, but I'm a quick learner and I know that I can figure this out and make it the way we want it and not the way that I want.
Mr. Patterson?
Welcome, everybody. I see a lot of familiar faces in the crowd, a lot of people I grew up with. I'm Doug Patterson. I'm a lifelong resident of Pickens County. I've been a citizen of Jasper since 2008. I grew up here. I love our town. I've worked away from here and seen what other towns and other communities have and I'm telling you, our hometown is awesome. This is the most highest quality of life of any individual that can live in this city and enjoy the things that we have. And what I'm concerned about is later, we're going to start growing faster than we can keep up and that's what we're going to have to really work on. I'm not, I don't have the experience of these people. I'm not, I'm not a politician. I'm one of you. I live here. I've lived here all my life. I love my town. I love the people that live here. I've worked with the people. I played football here in high school. I had this community supported me and my football team when I was playing. And when my kids started playing, we had a small group here that some of us worked together, Jay and Cindy and a bunch of them, we worked to help start JYSI and the community was awesome. The business owners and the citizens come in and donated money to make things happen for the kids to have something to do in this town. It was awesome. Used to, we went to Canton and borrowed football equipment that wasn't worth putting on a kid to use. So that year we got together, we all got together, we formed a team that raised money and we assisted almost 600 kids, well over 600 kids that year. So that's what we need to do with our town. We need to bring life back to town. When you ride through town after five o'clock in the afternoon, it looks like a ghost town. We need to bring festivals and things back in here and let people thrive off of what we do. If there's any questions, any of y'all got, I'd be happy to answer. Again, I'm not a public speaker. I'm just an old country boy. I'm a quality control manager and inspector. That's what I've been doing for the last 30 years. I put in pipelines and construction, water sewer and gas all over the country in the southeast. So I know what it takes for our infrastructure to grow, what it takes to make it happen. That's all I've got.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you. Dr. Proctor?
My turn. Well, y'all all know that I'm on about 25 different medicines, so I'm going to concede the standing part of the presentation because I certainly don't want to have to call the EMS in here when I start having palpitations. But I want to welcome everybody here. Most of y'all know me. Been in this community for a long time. I'm certainly no politician. Anybody who knows me knows that. I'm a scientist. That's what I've done all my life, since I was a little boy, picking up frogs and tadpoles. I ask questions. I do my research. I make my decisions and then I stand by my word. I was a skilled orthopedic surgeon until my health prevented me from continuing to practice. I was given the opportunity at that time to become a executive vice president, or excuse me, a corporate vice president for Piedmont Healthcare when I was the chief medical officer at Mountain Side. And I'm very proud that we were able to take that little hospital, achieve national recognition in safety, physician, patient and employee satisfaction. Once I retired from Piedmont, I'm now a public service servant and I consider myself a philanthropist. I've served on many fiduciary boards, most recently the Veterans Memorial, and I've given resources, including money and work, to causes here as well as across the world. I've been a hard-working leader since I first picked up a ball when I was a young man and I now have accumulated training and experience and success in strategic organization, planning and hardwiring success. I've lived here a long time and I raise my family here too. My beautiful wife Karen, my son Folsom, who despite being legally blind as an Eagle Scout, graduated from Pickens County High School with honors and is a thriving young freshman at Berry College. I am so excited that today he had the opportunity to vote. He just won't tell me who he voted for. Many of you know that I've had to fight through many health and personal challenges, heart surgery, cancer, loss of both my parents and a child, two hurricanes and a house fire. But God has seen me through this and I have fought a good fight. I'm a good and loyal man and I'm confident in my abilities. I love my family. I love my neighbors and I love Jasper. I fully understand the meaning of fiduciary and vow and oath and I faithfully abide by them. Can I wrap it up in two seconds? I don't just plan on doing the things on my platform. I am so honored to be already doing them. I hope this record of commitment and success convinces you to keep me as your city council. Please do.
Thank you, Dr. Proctor. Ms. Davis?
First of all, I'd like to also thank y'all for being here. I'm Ann Snady. I've been on the city council for eight years and I would like to ask for your support tonight to continue to serve the citizens of Jasper. I served with four other great members on this council and we have done some good things and I think we have a lot of other things that we can do. We have put in an order for a fire truck to keep our ISO rating. We have been able to add generators to our water so that this last hurricane, everybody had water, we didn't lose water. We have some great employees at the city and I would like to thank them for getting the community back together right after the hurricane. We've got some hard workers at the city. And while I'm on the city employees, I also wanted to spell a rumor. People keep saying the city council's going to fire. We don't hire and fire. We're not going to start now. That is the city manager's position. We don't do that. But all the, what I'm trying to say with my service, I've done, been on here eight years. I think we have an opportunity to grow, but my whole thing has been on controlled growth. We have to keep our small-town atmosphere, but we also have to have some opportunities here for our younger, younger people to have jobs. I think that we are moving forward. I think if you're not moving somewhat forward, you're moving backwards and I would like for all of y'all to continue to support me and my endeavor to seek another term so we can continue to progress forward in this town. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next question I'll put to all the candidates. What is your platform? What is it you plan to do for the city of Jasper? Once again, we'll go in alphabetical order. Mr. O'Day?
So my platform is, is same as most of us here is to, like Ann said, controlled growth on there. I believe in controlled growth. I do believe that we can have benefits of having jobs and revenue while still having that home town feel. I believe in improving Jasper's infrastructure. I hear a lot that we're outdated. We don't look good. The buildings just look rundown. We shouldn't be spending $15,000 on the fire station roof for a building that should be torn down a long time ago or a waters department's building that has holes in it and is leaking. Our infrastructure is rundown, needs to be worked on. The other thing, entertainment here for not only the older generation, the younger generation and our kids, all right? We all do it. We all go down to Canton or we all go up to L.J. or Blue Ridge to be entertained and we have that potential here to it. So bringing in that entertainment, bringing in those things to do, keeping the people here and bringing other people here to enjoy, to enjoy this Jasper, enjoy what we have here on there. Having an ethical government, all right? One that is open, one that you can come up to anyone and ask, what is it that we're doing? How is it we're doing? Ask those questions to us on there. Ethical government. Our budget should not be hidden, our budget on what we should be doing. Each of the departments within the city should be responsible for what they're responsible for and accountable for, not only to the equipment that we spend a lot of money on, but also to the people. Making sure that they have the equipment and the knowledge to be able to do their jobs safely so they get to go home and enjoy their family members. Those are my big, that's my big platform.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Patterson?
First of all, we need some common sense government. We need to work with existing businesses and potential new businesses, simplify and permit requirement process of fees and open the management business here. So I believe taxes should not go up in the residence of town, of this town. The city has done a great job not overburdening the hard-working citizens. If elected, I will, I will make sure property taxes burden does not go up. Our families do the best with their budgets, associate our government. Parks and Recreation. I live in Arbor Hill, Southern Division. We have a park on the north side of town called Doris Park, Doris Whedon Park. It's a great resource, but the problem is people are scared in my neighborhood and the city to go and walk in this park. It's got a name, a bad name, and I don't like that because it's right next to my community. It's called the Raper Park. So we need to put some lighting in that park and make it where it's got that golf cart accessible as what it was meant to be. We need to tie town along with those parks. Also, there's people in this, in this community that like to see sidewalks from here all the way down to Roper Park, but that would be correlation with the, with the county government to do that. Downtown, we need to bring life back to downtown. Like I said before, it looks like a ghost town after five o'clock. You know, we need to, we need to bring back some of these festivals and stuff that we used to have. Use the Roper Hospital green space for, you know, concerts or community events, okay? The tree weeds downtown should be managed and quality street department. We have a great quality street department. We also have a great water department, sort of one. We need to stand behind those employees and not let them all worry about if they're going to have a job come after this election or not. That's what they're all afraid of. Okay? Education growth. Want to show the younger generation to make a difference in our community. Says I, I went to school here and I'm proud of it. I was a 1983 graduate of Pickens Tech. I took the welding program. That's what boosted my career as a welder and a fire control inspector and also a authorized nuclear, I always, also was an authorized nuclear inspector, but hard for steam boiler. I've inspected nuclear power plants all over the country. Also, our infrastructure. City of Jasper is the only government entity and county that offers water sewer, sewer treatment. The city also is the, is the most of the treated water for our county as well. Water and sewer is critical of bringing business to our community. If elected, I will work with the council to upgrade the system so the town can continue to grow to the 21st century. Emergency service. If I'm elected, I will assure that the city of Jasper Fire Department, Police Department has the protection and the funds that they need to make us feel safe here in our own town.
Tom? Okay. Dr. Proctor? Want to run through this one?
I've been thinking about a vision for this town for over 20 years. In that time, I've developed relationships with people at all levels and I don't just mean politicians. These people want to help us achieve our vision. I'm familiar with the bureaucracy of project conception, design, planning, implementation, budgeting and funding for all the items on my platform. I am also familiar with and have participated in the comprehensive planning process and I've actually read the comprehensive plan. We can get these things done. Much on this platform may sound oddly familiar to y'all, but I guess the real issues are the real issues. This is a brief summary of my platform, developed and written only by me and made public in August. These items reflect many of the things that I've already been working on the past year, either with the council or with other organizations that I participate in. Number one, organize our city government according to our official charter as approved in 1983 by the state legislature. The law is the law and as public servants, we must follow our sworn duty to protect the law and the citizens of Jasper. Number two, support local businesses and develop a mission for main street revitalization. Number three, partner with other leaders in our city, county, region and state to improve our city by careful planning and efficient implementation. Energize our greatest resource, our young people, to actively participate in the planning and the doing in their city. This includes education at all levels. We can involve every citizen, but the future is in our young people. Use proven and accepted philosophies of economic development to selectively grow our city. Let me be very clear about this. This has nothing to do with encouraging growth, quite the opposite. Growth is here. Economic development controls it selectively, maximizing the return to our community. Now I can address things like safety and infrastructure and parks and recreations, but these things must be first thoroughly evaluated and then prioritized based on resources and citizen input. That is a fundamental component of the strategic planning process.
Ms. Davis?
Again, as I said earlier, my campaign has been based on controlled growth. I agree that the growth is coming. We just have to be able to control it to keep our small-town atmosphere. We all love that. That's why we're here. I moved in here 28 years ago. I feel like this is home. I came from a big city. I know what happens in the big city and that's not what I want to see happen here. I think we need to use the 515 to our advantage for economic opportunities, but again, as all them have mentioned, our infrastructure. We have to be able to cater to businesses. We have to be able to provide water and sewer. There's a lot of things that have to be done and, and I feel like as a responsible person on the council, we have $11.5 million budget this year. I think we spend this money like it was ours on the city council. We try to approve the things that our citizens want us to approve, even against sometimes our own wishes, but I'm a taxpayer just like y'all are and I feel like that I spend the money like I would my own money. Again, I want to, you know, I'm motivated to do the infrastructure. We can't come in the city and redo everything at one time. I think that we've done a great job over the years. I think John Weaver's done a great job bringing water, bringing businesses, but at this point, we really have to sit down, revitalize and, and kind of see what's going to happen to be able to control this growth that's coming because it's coming up this highway whether we want it or not.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. At this time, we're going to open it up so you can ask questions of the candidates. Couple of things before we start, let me reiterate what Dan said earlier. When you ask a question, try to ask a question for all the candidates. Even if you direct your question to one particular candidate, all the candidates will be given the opportunity to respond. Also, I would also like to ask you, when you do raise your hand, and I'll call on you, point you out, if I call on you to ask your question, please stand so we can hear. At my age, I'm getting sort of hard hearing and I'd like to hear your question too. So please stand and I would also like for you to identify yourself when you stand. Your name, your occupation, okay? I'm going to have a question for the candidates. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Cindy Faust. I live in the city of Jasper, lived here for 30 years. I am a manager with Northside Hospital and manage 22 physicians in multiple locations. So my question to all the candidates is each one of you have talked about revitalizing downtown. I want to know who do you plan to work with and how do you intend to get these sole business owners to work with and agree on implementing your plan? And that's open to all candidates.
All right, Mr. Patterson, you go first this time.
Well, I know they got the Jasper, was it Jasper Merchants Association is trying to revitalize the downtown. Also, the Chamber of Commerce is trying to help out with that also and, and even the city council. So I think if elected as a council, then we can work with them. We need to challenge the business owners. You know, it ain't just, it ain't just the people that live here. People need to help challenge the people and the business owners to read, to revitalize their buildings. The owners in town, they look like they're falling off the building in some places. You know, most, you know, the Copland's, they come in and painted or redone the blue building, everybody calls it the Old Napa Building. It's awesome. That's what we need more of, but the council's going to have to work with these new businesses and the old businesses to make sure that, you know, there's no big high permits or whatever to do. And if we need to work with those people, we need to make it happen.
Dr. Proctor?
Okay, so there's really, first of all, there's a lot of activity that's already going on in revitalization. The Downtown Alliance Committee, which is a spinoff of the Chamber, has been working since we were fortunate enough to secure a transportation study a little over a year ago. And the council has a committee that is working on evaluating the green space where the Roper Hospital was to possibly do some sort of entertainment venue, possibly some public restrooms. And, and so those are things that are already occurring. There are actually state organizations that could give us a lot of help. The GMA, Georgia Municipal Association, has a program that could give us some guidance on city planning. Carl Vinson Institute does city planning things. As a matter of fact, we have a fellow from over in Marble Hill or Yellow Creek area, Nelson, that actually works for the Carl Vinson Institute and has done some little precursory stuff with the Chamber. And then where the real bait for the buck is, is the Department of Community Affairs. That's where we get most of our state-funded money and that's a big part of the comprehensive planning revolves around engaging with the Department of Community Affairs and they have a main street program. We've also talked to Representative Jasper's about some planning grants that we may be able to use to evaluate some of these properties using architectural drawings rather than under more, you know, just somebody that does graphic work or whatever. So there are a lot of things that are, number one, already happening and, and number two, there are a lot of resources that we really have not tapped into. So that's what I got and that's all.
Mr. O'Day?
So just like both of these have said, there are a lot of resources out there. Ultimately comes down to, similar to what Doug says, challenging those owners of those property to want to and be able to redevelop and revitalize that downtown. A lot of the owners, they lose their, the people, the tenants that are in there, they lose their money and, and can't do revitalizing. So as a city, we need, we do need to work with those, those owners on there, get them the resources that were mentioned and kind of challenge them to, to help us redevelop that downtown.
Ms. Davis?
As they said, I am on the steering committee for downtown, also on the Chamber of Commerce. When we have worked with them, I've also worked with the GMA. They are trying to do a lot of things. Their hands, to some extent, are tied with... Their hands, to some extent, are tied with what they can do. They're trying to revitalize the downtown. I'm also on a blank plan with Mr. Faust on the city council that we're trying to work with all the business owners all over the city of Jasper on revitalizing the buildings and not having so many just metal buildings going up. We don't want to be known as the medical metal capital of the world instead of the marble capital. We're working hard to get this implemented, and so we hope to have that in place very soon that will hopefully take care of some of the problems that they're talking about with owners and buildings.
May I add one thing? One of the most important things about revitalizing the downtown area is getting people to live there. So we've got to figure out a way where we can have a cost-effective way to get young people to live near or in our city. And with an engaged group of owners like we have, Gary and Luke have invested a lot of money in our downtown area with really almost no return so far. But with that group of engaged owners, there are ways across the country where people are developing what's called the missing middle, which is these starter homes for young people that help get them into your downtown area, and then they can go to your stores and your shops and your restaurants. So that's something I think we'll be looking at. Since I gave Dr. Proctor a little extra time, anybody like to comment on what he had to say, or? Okay, thank you, sir. Next question from the office? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Roger Schultz. I don't live in the city, but drink the city water, shop here, travel the roads, so I'm very much interested in it. But I have lived in the county for over thirty years, and my question is, my observation as a non-citizen of the city is that the city and the county have not always worked together very closely on another number of projects, and I'd like to hear from each of you how you feel the city and the county can work together in harmony in the best interest of the citizens in there, in the city and the county.
Dr. Proctor, you go first this time. Why didn't I know you were going to give me that first? I think it's, I think it's just part of the, it's part of the process that I think's broken here. Again, I've talked a lot about strategic planning. The first part of the strategic planning process is you, you get the, people have a vested interest in what you're trying to accomplish in the same room, and you let all of them vet what their ideas are, and then as a group, you make a decision. And when you leave that room, that decision's been made, and there's no backpedaling on it. It's kind of an agreement. It takes compromise. It takes cooperation. The term that the Economic Development Academy like to use is collaborative planning. So that's what we need to start working toward. Mr. O'Day?
So you go, you go south, you go, you go east on there, and you tell them that I live in Jasper. Most of them, they don't know that that's Pickens County. We definitely, without a doubt, have to work hand-in-hand with Pickens County on there. We cannot, Jasper cannot survive without Pickens County on there, and vice versa. Services that we provide is going to not only help fund Pickens County, but help fund Jasper. We both grow hand-in-hand, so we do both have to work hand-in-hand. Some of our cities or some of our streets that we may not know that are in the city limits, and some of the streets we'd be driving down, and all of a sudden, it becomes county roads on there. So we are integrated into the county, and I'm not sure why or how or when that kind of, that kind of mutual respect and mutual working together fell through, but as a city council member, I would without a doubt, open with open arms, welcome the county in to assist and to work with in improving Jasper and Pickens County.
Ms. Nate?
I agree that I think we all should need to work together. I think we're at a crossroads in this, and I've said it to many people as, as on the Chamber. We have a lot of opportunities here with our economic development, with our city, with our county. It's just a great opportunity for the city of Jasper, and I agree, I think we need to work together on this.
Mr. Patterson?
Well, I've been here all my life, y'all, and I see the county and the city. They may not work hand-in-hand every time together, but they do work pretty well together. Because if we didn't have, if the, if the county didn't have the water that was treated by the city, then they couldn't run. They'd have to buy and outsource every bit of the water to come into the county. So I think that we can get along. We need to get in a room, put our heads together, and do what's best for this town and this, in this community, this county. Not, not for personal one man or two people's personal gain. Put your heads together, let's work it out for God's sake. If we have to, say a prayer before we start and make it work. That's what we need here. We need to come back to common sense and work together. Everybody in this room are civilized people. Nobody's ears uncivilized. We can work together. I've known, I know just about everybody in this room. You can't tell me we cannot work together.
Another question from the floor? Yes, sir.
My name's Ken Wood. I own a property in the city and also live in the city. To all the council members, I've heard traffic, traffic, traffic. How will y'all work with the DOT to solve this traffic when y'all talk about growth?
Mr. O'Day, you go first this time.
There, working in Atlanta, I understand traffic.
But, excuse me, but you have some land obstacles in your city that you cannot move or can't do anything with.
Yes, and to that, there is different zones, different things, maybe even developing a whole different method of getting into the town and getting into their, the roads can look at different things. Strategically placing businesses and looking at the traffic flow that that business is going to add when we do go into, get into development, strategically placing the developments in areas where it's already pre-planned for that traffic. It's going to come down to planning. It's going to come down to not hastily putting these businesses in or subdivisions in or even a single house, and it's going to come down to pre-planning on there. I know the apple festivals in here, and you come up 515 and you stop at 108, 515, and all the way down to racetrack on there. So traffic is getting a concern, and it will be even a bigger concern when we do develop down there. And it's going to come down to pre-plan and trying to look at these different miles, trying to make different routes to our major arteries, 515, 53, and they're trying to see if there's a way of redirecting some of that traffic so it does not have to go down there. So planning is going to be the big part on this when it comes to development.
Ms. Nate?
Most of you are aware of that we have a study that we did by Kimberly Horn that's available to everybody. It does have some of that addressed in there. One of the main obstacles is coming down 53. You can't widen that for particular reasons. We are trying to work with the DOT to solve some of the problems, because that is the main thoroughfare, and everybody coming in and going. That is where our traffic backup comes to, right there. As the Steering Committee is working through this Kimberly Horn report, we're trying to do signage so people know how to get to town other than 53. We're trying to do other ways in, other ways out, because if you're not from here, you've got to come in on 53 because you don't really know how to come in otherwise. But we are continuing to address the, the traffic problem that you were talking about on 53.
Mr. Patterson?
Several years ago, it was brought to the mayor and the city council. They had a study done several years ago, and that they were wanting to make 53 a one-way going toward the interstate and bringing it back one-way by Lawson Chevrolet. Everybody in the community didn't want that. They said it would hinder their business, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't pay out. So, you know, we've tried this several years ago, and I know that Jackie Dunn and Amy Lee, they're working on that now, correct? And they, at the last council meeting, they brought that up and they talked about that. It's going to take a lot of work with the state, it's going to take some work with county, and it's going to take work with the city. But that would eliminate some of the traffic flow in and out if we put one way each way, but it's going to make people mad. People ain't going to like that, because it's, it's taking out of their ordinary time and their day is going to be different to them. It's going to be changed, and a lot of people want change. So we're going to have to come up with something that's going to work for everybody. You know, a long time ago, unfortunately, when they built that interstate, and everybody in this room was here, they didn't put exits in. They should have put exits in off that road and not stoplights and all the way up the interstate. When it first started, we didn't have stoplights. We only had one, you know? And that's what scared me when my kids was growing up. I didn't want to cross that interstate unless it was a stoplight. You know, that was the state's mess up there. That's not, you know, unfortunately, citizens of Jasper and the county has to deal with that.
Dr. Proctor?
So it pulls back down to collaborative planning, really. It runs just being the city and county getting together, it's the city and the county and the state getting together. The DOT, we call what Doug's talking about the big project. They wanted to spend millions and millions of dollars in our county, and we weren't able to come to any kind of agreement on how or when that would be done, and there've been funding issues with the DOT in recent years. I do know that that project is back on the drawing board, so to speak, the Kimberly Horn project. There are a couple of simple fixes in there. Now, simple when you're talking about moving traffic flow, it doesn't necessarily mean inexpensive, but there are some simple things like a turn lane at the North Georgia Bank there so that traffic doesn't back up there and redirecting some flow. Mayor Weaver's got some plans to kind of get some of the traffic away from the downtown area, and we just need to work together to figure out what we would like to see happening. Now, when the DOT gets involved in a state highway, you don't always get what you want, and you're always going to make people mad when you have to shut down their businesses or access to a business from a direction of flow, and you have to detour all the way around town. But the reality of it is, is that the DOT's who controls our highway roads, and we need to work with them. The other big problem with that big plan is that the fact that a lot of our infrastructure, particularly our water and sewer, is under the roads, and that is going to be a tremendous expense when that project occurs for us to correct it. My personal opinion, we devote a lot of infrastructure dollars out to the highway, and that's good. That's brought a lot of good, we've annexed properties that have increased our tax dollars coming in, but we've neglected to a large degree the infrastructure on the old part of town, and eventually, that's going to have to be addressed, so.
Another question? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Sue Binley. I'm a retired educator. I appreciate the interest in parks, the park system and improving. I will make an observation here. I thought it was interesting that the only park that was mentioned is right adjacent to the largest voting block in the county. Coincidence, perhaps? What I'd like to know is, what are the plans for the other parks? I've had young mothers mention to me they would like to take their children to a park and play safely, and I would just like to know what your, the plans are for this group for the park system in our city.
Ms. Nate?
We've just done some renovations at the city park here, and unfortunately, the Wicketon Park has become an issue for us. I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not sure how we're going to resolve that issue. I think we've got, it's kind of like we were talking about earlier, I think we have to prioritize things. A lot of people want to see dog parks. We want to be able to do some of that so they can take their dogs and they're not, the dogs are not around the children that, in the play-in areas. So I'm not sure how we're going to address the Wicketon Park, because like I said, it's going to take money, it's going to take time to correct some of the issues that are going on out there. And it's very unfortunate, because that is a nice piece of land that would have been a good park. But again, I am proud that the city has redone the city park, and it has, you know, there's always room for improvement to continue to do that as well. But I think we have at least attempted to start working on the parks.
Mr. Patterson?
Well, the main reason I brought up our Wicketon Park, it looks like it's just stagnated. It looks like they cleared it to cut the roads in, and it's just sitting there. I mean, people are scared. I talked to a lady this past weekend. She went over there to walk. Somebody broke into her car once, his iron stowed her pistol and all, her pocketbook and everything out of her car. It's, and then you hear other stories about people, drug deals going down. We need, we need to stop that. If we need to put some more law enforcement over, we need to do that. You know, Duck Pond, the Duck Pond is awesome. I like the Duck Pond. It needs to be revived. You know, the playgrounds are outdated a little bit. They need to be updated, you know? The main thing that you're about, city park right now, what the Duck Pond is, is the geese. Can't do nothing with the geese because peat and all this other, people will come in. If you try to kill them, take them out, we can't do that. So you got kids practicing football up there and rolling in goose poo. And then lead eating park, it's awesome. You know, that's where everybody wants to go because they feel safe. It's leaded, it's got bathrooms there. Everybody loves that park, and they could use a little updating, too, probably the stage area and stuff like that.
Dr. Proctor?
So just, just so y'all, make sure y'all understand that we, the city's obligated by law to operate on a balanced budget. So if we have X amount of dollars that we spend in one area, and we decide to spend more dollars in an area, we got to take it away from somewhere else. So Parks and Recreation is about 1% of our budget. We spend about $100,000 each year on Parks and Recreation. And in my, my opinion is that in a long-term planning strategy, we should be looking at Parks and Recreation as potential income for our city and our county. We have some nice parks in the county, these traveling ball teams that can come in and actually, the perfect, perfect storm, where you have somebody from outside the county coming in for a short period of time. You don't have to provide services to them, and they're spending money. And, you know, Jay, Tom and them done a great job over at JYSJ, and, but if we're going to take more money from the budget and put it in the parks, we have to take it from somewhere else. And I do know that we're working on our budget for next year as we speak. It'll be presented to the public shortly, and I know there's already funding in, at least provisionally, for more money going into the parks for next year. So, so the platform issue is there. The council has already begun to act on this before it was on the platform. So, but the reality of it is, we need to spend a lot more than $100,000 if we want to have great parks. The dollars, there's no funding really for parks. That's pretty much a, the communities have to do, they have to kind of do their own thing for parks. SPOS dollars, to be honest with you, I'm not sure whether SPOS dollars could be used for that. I'm assuming they could if it was dedicated to capital expenses. I don't think we, I don't think we can have a SPOS for a couple more years. Thanks, Dan.
Mr. O'Day?
So I share your same concern, and I have a ten-year-old and a seven-year-old. Seven-year-old in a couple of days on there. My son refuses to go to the Duck Pond. He says it's dumb. He says that the wood is rotten and falling apart. Yeah, we put some money into it a couple months ago on there. My kids want to play. They want to go out. And we don't have, we don't have the ability to, to walk down the street on sidewalks, and we don't have that luxury of, of having the community park that our kids can just walk to on there. We have to take them on there. We have to have entertainment for the kids on there. My kids, they, they don't go to the park. They don't go to it because it's outdated. It's not what, it's what's a three- or four-year-old would want. As far as our baseball field, I went to, my son plays on the baseball team, the traveling baseball teams. We go to Waleska. They have an amazing baseball field, set of baseball fields for Waleska. We're bigger and better than Waleska, but they got this amazing baseball field that can hold tournaments. Hundreds and hundreds of people are at this tournament, bringing in revenue, bringing in this. We're very capable of that. Our baseball fields are overrun, graffiti filled. The outfield is unlevelled. But we have our kids play on this. This is what people from outside our town come and see when our kids. We can't even keep our, our... We can't even keep our scoreboards lit up with all the bulbs. It's the appearance that we're showing other people on there with the lack of interest in our parks.
Is there any question from the floor? Yes, sir.
I'm David Keller. I've been in Pickens County for about 25 years, in the city of Jasper now for about six or seven months. We just built a new house on Main Street. It was really surprising, my wife and I, when we went downtown, and there's nothing. I mean, it's just, it's like empty sidewalks. Nobody parked down there, there's nobody doing anything. And now I'm here, the 61 Main is, they're going to stop serving dinner on Friday to Saturday nights, and then it's really going to be bad, because there's not going to be anybody here. But, y'all, I'll talk about controlled growth, controlled growth, and that the growth is coming. Problem is, growth is coming, but it's going north. It'll, they don't stop unless they need gas or something to grow. And, you know, they go into LJ, LJ's growing. Blue Ridge, we were in Blue Ridge for the Pickens High School band competition this weekend. You can't, you can't walk down the sidewalk, there's so many people. I mean, it's just, it's just, there's no place to park you. And they're doing, you know, Bucoo's a business. I'm sure the residents of Pannon County appreciate the fact that the taxes are coming from all these businesses, not necessarily from the homeowners. And if we don't have some growth here, it's going to bring in tax revenue. You know, we as homeowners are just going to keep paying more and more, because, you know, you talk about the budget where it is, everybody wants more, everybody wants more. But, you know, unless we raise our taxes, you know, it's not going to, there's no more, there's no more to it. So, I'd like to know what, what kind of plans we have for growth that's going to stay here.
Mr. Patterson, back to you.
Well, that's a very hard question to answer. You know, all the surrounding towns, Ball Ground, look at Ball Ground. There used to be a rock store, the whole town of Ball Ground. Now they're calling it Little Buckhead. You know, they, I guess the city, Ball Ground has worked with the small business owners to help them come in and generate, you know, generate their businesses. You know, we need to look and see if we can figure out a way for that to happen here. It's a shame, if you go to LJ, it's the same way. I have found out that LJ is broke though. City of LJ has got no money, so I don't know how they've done what they've done without any money. So, you know, we're going to have to get with the business owners, you know, we're going to have to talk to them, what they need, what, what, what are they bleeding from, you know, what's causing them to do the things that they're doing? You know, the people, people ain't coming here just because, you know, you go through town after 5:00, and Wayneology is the only one open, and 61 Main is just every now and then. And then you got the Woodbridge on the other end of town. So, you know, some of the businesses, to my opinion, is to stay open longer than 5:00, you know? I mean, we got the beautiful resources in town, and I don't know why we can't figure out a way to use that. So, that's a hard question. I don't have the answer to that. But we're going to have to work together in this town to figure it out. We're going to have to challenge the business owner, we're going to have to challenge the citizens, because you know what? When people see a good thing, they want more of it. It's just like when we started JYSA, people saw that. It was stagnant. Wasn't nobody playing. We had a couple of traveling ball teams. And then when we got the stuff here for people to use and had the resources for them to use, it was phenomenal. It went crazy. And then we was having to worry about if we could, we could take care of the kids easier. So, that's what we need to do with our town.
Dr. Proctor.
So, the situation in our county, including the city, kind of is what has limited our group growth so much. If you look on the county side, most of the counties either rural, residential, or agricultural, so there's no way really to have any kind of multi-unit housing out there, which would bring a large group of people in. I'm not necessarily advocating for apartments and so forth, but that is a, that's a more cost-efficient way of delivering services to a larger population. And the mayor's been pretty adamant and vocal about not having R3 in our city. And so, so that's going to limit where we can do it. That's, that's been a limitation to growth on the people's side too. You know, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough equation, because you've got to deliver services to, or you're obligated to deliver services to these people once you bring them into your city. And so, you got, you got to make sure that you have cost-effective housing, but you also want it to be quality housing. And I think that goes back to where you have vested owners who, there may be benefit from them having somebody living in town if it's going to go to their restaurants and go to their shops. These shops staying open costs them money. They're, they're small business owners, and they're on a dime anyway, and if they've got to have employees there to keep it open when three or four people come in, they just can't do it. The owners of the property, we have no, we have no ways to control their rent fees. Now, in Ball Ground, you know, the city bought a lot of those properties and charges lower rent, which was a win-win for people. Blue Ridge has a lake and a railroad. I'm not saying we don't have plenty of good stuff, we do, but this reactionary-type environment that we've been in for so long has penalized us. But if we don't do something, get more people in our county, and I'm not talking about tremendous amounts of people, you do selective things with quality construction. The state, the, the state is predicting in 2050 we'll have 40,000 people. So, that's only 10,000 more. That was in the comprehensive meeting plan in this building, in this room several months ago. Personally, I think it's going to be more, but, but that's what they're predicting, and we need to start planning for it. And the way we need to start planning for it is figure out where they're going to live. Land's so expensive here, and you can, in the county, you know, you can't afford to live out there. Like, man.
Mr. O'Day.
So, when Walmart came, everyone was worried, oh, Jasper's going to blow up. And while there hasn't been really any growth since Walmart came in, there's been some, small businesses, things like that. But we do need to take advantage of our resources that we have here. 515's a wonderful resource to be able to develop small industry, small commercial growth on there while keeping the traffic over there and not in the areas where we live. Enticing companies, okay? I, I love all the restaurants that we have, but I don't know if you, but I'm kind of tired of fast food restaurants. Kind of tired of fast food coming there. I want to see good quality restaurants come in here so we can actually go and not have to go to Canton or LJ to get some, some good steaks and things like that. So, enticing them. Do tax incentives or things like that, enticing those businesses to come in here on there. Encouraging those that are wanting to start businesses on their own, giving them those resources, directing them to people that can help with those, with those plans and help with those business plans to get those. I personally have a very good idea for a business, but I was kind of, sort of bummed out when I went to the finance side of it, and I said, oh, wow, okay, on there, but I'm still going to try it. So, because I think that businesses do want to come here, we just got to give them the incentive to stop here and not continue up to LJ, Blue Ridge, where there's already that huge population and that huge tourist, and they know they can make their money. We've got to convince these business owners that are going north to stay here because they can make the money. However way it is, working with, with the committees and counties and states and how they're doing that will benefit us.
Ms. Lee.
Well, I certainly think it is a balancing act. I think we are, have to plan to improve our infrastructure. We also have to, we have a great opportunity, Jerry McPatal, I think I saw him earlier, was here, working with him with our economic development. He is, he's doing some good, great things for Pickens County and Jasper. So, I feel like that, and I would love to see all of y'all here tomorrow night for the comprehensive plan meeting, so, and have your input, because that's what we're trying to do now, is planning for the future. So, any, a lot of these are great ideas, so come out and share a lot of these with this tomorrow, because we're going to be coordinating this soon.
Yes, yes. All right, so, my name is Stephen Hall. First, I want to thank Dan and the scanner for putting this on. It's been good. My background is in social and political science. Done that for a while now. My question's for all you guys. So, switching gears from a lot of the conversation talking about infrastructure and economic development, transportation, and focusing on the internal issues that I believe are important to a lot of individuals here in this community. If a motion were carried now to separate the city manager and the mayor on the position, who would support that and why? And if not, why?
Dr. Proctor.
I'm sorry, sir.
Well, I'm kind of willing to bring it up, so, I would support the separation of the city manager and mayor position, because I truly believe that according to the laws of the state of Georgia and the charter that we approved in 1983, that it clearly demonstrates that the, there's an incompatible of positions between those two with a potential, if not a real, conflict of interest. And so, I would either move and/or second that motion.
Mr. O'Day.
I do feel that there, there should be definitely a check and balance in our government with the way it's ran. I do feel that there should be a separation between those two positions. I do feel that having the ability to have two people in a position that has, can run a daily, daily, the daily city functions while still having to be able to, having somebody as the figurehead and the decision makers on that. I do feel that those two can be, should be two separate people. Does it need to happen right now? That's among the, that's among the council members to decide. Will it require a good vote and will it require a good set of rules to be changed in our, our charter? Yes. I don't think it should be a haste kind of decision. I think it should be very spelled out and very clear on what the roles and responsibilities for the two are, so.
Ms. Lee.
I think it's evaluation process that, like he said, I think there's a lot of things you have to look at. I don't think it's something you can say, okay, I'm going to do this today and separate immediately and do. I think you've got to have some plans in place if that be. We're also in the process of evaluating the charter, so I'm not going to take a stance on whether it's good or not, because I'm not an attorney, and so I would like to leave that up for the evaluation.
I'm 100% agreement with Ann. I've lived here on a lot. We've had, in my lifetime, we've had three mayors that I know of in my life. For the last 40 or 45 years, that's the way it's always been. You've had the city manager and the mayor is the same person. And it just seems like here recently it's given a problem for everybody. So, I don't necessarily, I'm not a lawyer, so I would have to defer that to the city attorney to let him specify what the law is, but it just really troubles me to know that the city of Jasper has been violating the law this many years. So, if that's the case, it sounds like to me things need to be reevaluated. Charter needs to be looked at, and somebody besides the four people sitting up here would have to, you know, if we're elected, of course, we're going to be the one voting for that coming January. But my opinion is, it's going to have to take some evaluation, some detailed studying of the charter, make sure the charter is written correctly. Because if the charter's been run since 1983, then we, we have some issues. That's my opinion.
We have time for one more question. I'll tell you. Just maybe.
We have spoke this evening, and I do not live in the city, I live in the county, but we all know that city affects the whole county. I'm Aprilie Godfrey, I apologize. We have spoke this evening about growth and controlled growth. To support that growth, you need a qualified, educated workforce. We have a wonderful institution in our county in Chat Tech. Enrollment is down. Do, I want to know what your plans are or your thoughts on working with Chat Tech and the local school systems to raise enrollment, to get that qualified workforce, to support the growth that we all have discussed.
Mr. O'Day.
So, when I, when I was in high school, we had, and like the term of it, it was called a Bosse program. It was a technical school that while you're in high school, you went to this technical school, and you, for half your high school, junior, senior year, you went to that and learned a skill, learned a trade. And they had a lot to offer. That, that was amazing. I mean, kids were coming out of that school with airframe and power plant mechanics license, diesel license, the pilot's license, nursing certificate on there. Those, those programs, and these kids were coming out of high school with these things. That was adopted, that program was adopted, and that was 20 years ago. That program was adopted for, in a lot of cities and a lot of communities. Can't do that here if we don't argue. I believe that, yes, we have an amazing resource at Chattanooga Tech to bring in good quality education, good skilled-based education, but it does need to be relevant to the modern workforce. So, we do have to reevaluate, schools have to reevaluate their curriculum to make sure that it stays relevant to what the workforce is going on. I have, I, I, I love education. I go to, I go to Georgia Tech for a lot of my trainings, safety training. They have an amazing program that they work with OSHA on education there. Why can't we work with different organizations, different governments to get grants and funds here for our, our technical schools on there? Use, find people, local people to get in, in the job training on there, to have the experts, to have the knowledge to be able to do that.
Ms. Lee.
Well, I think a lot of you are aware that we have lost a lot of Chappuchoe Tech, but we have also just gained a nursing program that's coming back up here through Ryan Park. I would like to see us work closer with the chamber in bringing our educational back. I'm not particularly on the educational committee, but I know some of them are here. But I would love to see us use up more of our resources here, collaborations with other resource, other, like I said, the chamber, the county, where we can make this an opportunity for these kids to be able to go here and not be traveling down the road and way up the road.
Mr. Patterson.
It's been about, 10 years ago, I was the instructor at the tech school. I taught welding and art. And the problem that we had back then was, we didn't have no funding, the state didn't have enough money to put into the program. So, a lot of the stuff that was done in the program, some of it I paid for myself so the, so the students would have something to do. No materials, I had to get the outsourced materials from the, from the manufacturing companies surrounding us. It was char and hydrochem, supplied material for the kids to, when kids is grown men, to weld them. So, I had
So I had to go out and beg for material, okay? The state school would actually, what they would do, they would buy the filler material, but they was only allowed to use so much a day. We were so concentrating as a, as a, they was wanting to turn it completely into a college, and they were more worried about teaching code of ethics. I agree with that a hundred percent. Teach it one semester, don't teach it every semester, because you take the time away from the guys learning their trade. And another thing was, if they missed two nights, they were kicked out of the program. These are guys that were working full-time jobs, coming there, that had kids and children. And if they missed two nights, they were kicked out of the program. Okay? While I was there, we got rid of the machine shop. There's machine that's needed everywhere here, mill rights, they're needing that. They canceled that. They moved all the equipment out and moved it down to North McRae Tech. And they were going to cancel the welding program. I fought to, from there, Mr. John Denny was my sponsor. That's why we tried to, I fought to keep it there. But the problem was that we don't have the funding. We used to have industrial plant maintenance. They still got auto body and auto body and auto body paint, paint body. But they don't have plant maintenance, they don't have electronics no more. There's stuff that we need in these communities and the surrounding counties to support the trade. We're not, we don't have it no more.
Dr. Proctor.
What do I have, three minutes? So, so I'm the chairman of Education and Workforce Development Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. And over the last two or three years, we've been trying to address some of these things. I'm also on the President Steering Committee for Chattahoochee Tech. And the short version is, when they reorganized Chattahoochee Tech, we had 1,100 students. Now we have about 600 or 700. And so, so we lost a bunch of students that went to some of these newer campuses. And when Chat Tech looks at that, they say, well, look, we kept all these students, and it kind of, you know, boils down to economic development. Those were students that didn't live here, were coming here for courses that, and spending money here in our county, and we've lost those students. There's a lot of energy being directed at Dr. Newcombe, who is the president of Chattahoochee Tech right now. I've personally met with Gretchen Corbin, she's the state commissioner for the technical schools, to identify some of the things. Obviously, healthcare is one of my passions. I'm excited about Ryan Hart's being here, although to a certain degree, they have a little bit stronger alliance with Northside than they do with Piedmont. And we're working on that, and I think we'll be able to overcome that. There's also been some programs that have recently been added here. There's gonna be a carpentry program here. And one of the exciting things that has happened is that we are, we now have the ability to telecommunicate so that we can start to having more of our core courses where our kids, either in the Move On When Ready or the, the other programs at our high schools, don't have to travel down south to get those. So there is a lot of activity going on. At the high school and in Mount Ned, we've worked on programs for soft skills, interviewing, job application skills, so these kids will, will have the tools they need when they go out on the job market. And there's been a real de-emphasis recently about encouraging all these kids to go to college, and there's more of an emphasis of them making a decision as early as they can in their educational careers about whether they wanna go to college or wanna do something else. Tremendous skilled, skilled labor lacks here in, in our country, and we're working on, we're currently already working on all these things.
Mr. O'Dea.
I lost track. I started.
Not only is my hearing going bad when I'm getting old, my memory is too. I wanna finish up by allowing the candidates three minutes to make closing statements. Before I call on them to do that, I'd like to remind everyone, you know how when you go to a movie, most people get up and run out with credits, you know, star? Now that I'm over, I'm standing waiting for everybody's out of the way, so I'll have to stand in line. But anyways, when the candidates are finished, as you wrap it up, you're welcome to stay here and mix and mingle with the candidates and talk to them personally for a while. Okay? I started out this evening in alphabetical order for the opening statements, so I'm gonna do reverse alphabetical order in an effort to be fair. So Ms. Lee, you go first, three minutes.
Well, as most of you know me, I've been on the council for eight years. I am looking for your support tonight to serve another term, as I can talk here. I also wanna thank all of y'all for coming out and showing support for your local candidates. We don't see that a lot of times when we're just the only, the only thing that you're voting for, so. But I would like to give, have the opportunity to continue to serve the citizens. I do think that we are moving forward. I do think we have growth coming, I think we've got to strategically plan for this. Most of you know, I really do love this town, I've been here 30 years, and I'm on the chamber board, I'm on the Boys and Girls Advisory Council, I've just finished leadership Pickens this year, and I'm on the downtown steering committee trying to make the downtown a better place. I'm also working with the JMA too. Again, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the last eight years, and I'd look for your support to serve another term. Thank you.
Always had trouble doing the alphabet backwards when you're sober.
Yes. Dr. Proctor.
Karen and I moved here 22 years ago, which to me seems like a long time. We immediately started investing our efforts and our dollars into this community. Most of it started out in our lovely home, when we were doing a lot of the work ourselves and I wasn't that busy. I've raised my family here, I've demonstrated my loyalty and commitment to this community time and time again. I've mourned here and I've rejoiced here. I'm so proud to have taken what was a little sleepy hospital, this was our cafeteria, and helped improve our healthcare in our community, made a real contribution, and we now have a world healthcare system here. I was controlled, at Piedmont, Mountside, when I was in the CMO, our budget was 45 times what our city budget is. And I have experience in strategic planning, budget, employee relations, project development and completion, and I have the skills that are necessary to get some of these things, if not all of them, done on my plan. As your councilman, I've demonstrated a willingness to go against the grain and do the right thing. We must hold our leaders accountable to do their jobs without conflict of interest according to the laws and the policies that the governing body puts forth, and that's our city council. Since elected, I feel I've led our council in a more open and inquisitive and strategic way, and it's excited some people in all walks of life. We've already begun this journey, and it hasn't been easy to stand up against the status quo for what is right. Don't stop it by making a choice that supports the past environment. Please look hard at the facts. Who in this race has demonstrated they have the training, the experience, the results, and the fortitude to get this city on track? Let's not beat around the bush. This is about a new direction for our city, and we're already on that journey. We've already made that turn. Let's keep it going. Please reelect me as your city councilman.
Mr. Patterson.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. Thanks for giving a stop for Karen to speak. I'm just a real man who wants to bring real common sense solutions to our beloved city. I said, if you elect me, and I promise y'all I'll give you my absolute best, I respectfully ask you to vote for me on November the 7th. Thank you.
Mr. O'Dea.
So, 15 years ago, I moved here. I used to live, if anyone knows, Wendy Hill, down there in Kyle County, I used to live there. My car got broken into flex. Had a friend of mine that convinced me to move up here. I looked at a house, the house I live in now. And then I moved south, I kept going south, I kept coming back to this house, the house I live in now. 15 years ago, I moved in that house, a brand new house. When the housing market crashed, I stayed in my house. I love this community so much that I volunteered for the fire department for the last 13 years. Some of you may even help. I believe in this community. I believe that this community can improve and is a wonderful the way it is. I believe in it so much that I'm willing to help you out in the time of need. I'll continue to serve, even if it's on a different function as, as a city council. I will volunteer my time in the city council. I will volunteer my time, continue to volunteer my time in the fire department. I believe in this community, and I believe, and I want to continue to stay here and see this community develop and grow into what it should be. But again, it's gonna be controlled. We're not gonna go crazy, we're not gonna be like Ken. So, I thank you for everyone's time, thank you for everyone coming here, and I look to serve you in the future. I look for your vote, I look for your support. Thank you.
In closing, I'd like to make one observation. Many decades ago, long before he became U.S. Senator, the late Herman Talmadge was governor of Georgia. At that particular time, Georgia was having some problems economically, and there was a large number of people moving to Florida from Georgia. Governor Talmadge was asked about this, and he said, it doesn't bother me one bit, because it raises the intelligence of both states. The reason I bring that up, your questions were wonderful. Very, very intelligent questions, thank you for that, and thank you for coming, and responses were also very intelligent. And I can see nobody in Pickens County's moving south. Thank y'all for coming. Remember, you're welcome to stay and meet personally with the candidates for a few minutes if you'd like. (applause)